Call the regular council meeting at City Hall to order March 20th at 7:00 PM. Additions to the agenda, under new business, the Drinking Fountain of Brown Park. Also, executive sessions, 10 minutes for Jeff to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. Executive session, seven minutes to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. Also, another seven-minute executive session, followed by another executive session, 10 minutes to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel.
Can we amend those? The first one would be executive session, 10 minutes for Jeff to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel regarding potential hires. Is that correct? And the second one, executive session, seven minutes to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. What would be the further exception on that?
For the second one?
Yeah.
Would it be employee performance?
Yeah. And the third one? Same thing.
Two separate persons?
Two separate ones.
Two separate employees.
It's just a potential, and we can go out and then come back in, instead of doing it separately. What do you think?
I think we could raise this one, Jeff.
We, I mean, my preference would be to eliminate the third one, and if we need to have the third one, then we can amend the agenda at that time to do the third one, since it involves the same person. Or we go back out.
Okay. So take the third one out?
Yeah, I mean, they're all the same.
Right.
And what's the last one?
The 10-minute?
Oh, it's not supposed to... Sorry.
Go ahead.
The 10-minute executive.
That's what I was reading. Yep, would be employee performance.
Different employee.
That's a different employee.
All right, sorry to interrupt.
Okay, with the amended changes there, do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Marshall, second by Ryan. All in favor? All opposed? Carries 4-0. Moving on to citizens' comments. Does anyone have any comments this evening?
I'd just like to, I've sent you a letter.
Right.
I'd just like to advise the council that on Sunday afternoon, April the 15th at 5:00 PM, the Minister's Alliance is sponsoring an appreciation service for all of our first responders, 9/11 EMS, fire, police. There'll be some short videos shown, kind of shows what these people do. We recognize it, and it's just a time. Basically, a fellowship will have recognition, have certificates for each one of them, followed by cake and lunch. And the community is, of course, invited. We want anybody to come, but let them come, but just so that y'all are aware that it's being done.
I ask real quick, guys, pertaining to that event, I wanted to ask you if it was okay if I put my signatures on those certificates to recognize those people, on behalf of the city?
Sure.
Consent is okay?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Thanks, Ray. Are there any other citizens' comments this evening? All right, moving on to consent agenda. Approved the minutes, regular council meeting, March 5th, 2018. Also appropriation ordinance 03-2018, an amount of $16,308. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Mark and Ryan, all in favor? All opposed? Just carries five-oh. Okay, and then on to the next item, public hearing for housing violations. Joan?
Jamie and I talked a little bit about how we want to handle this today. Today is the end of, whatever, the 60 days since the passage of the First Resolution. And I think what we'll do is just go in order by the house, and then if Jeff could kind of describe the condition, whether there's any progress, just to give the council an update as to where things are. Remember that they had to commence repair or removal of the structures by today. And I apologize, I do not have the addresses memorized, so if I say one of the Troyana properties that we pushed off to another project, I apologize, but 302 East First Avenue...
That's a Bean house, and nothing's been touched with it at all. We've tried to contact him different times and had no luck.
Oh, okay, yeah, let's do that. The reason we have to do it this way is because there's no statutory requirement that you guys adopt another resolution or that you pass an ordinance or anything of that nature. So what we're going to do is just make sure it's clear in the minutes what kind of decision that is made, and in that way that there's no misunderstanding.
And you are starting with the Bean property area? Why is this not yet? The mouse is showing up, though.
I did. I think I do. Well, I kind of fixed. Took it down to persons.
We appreciate you supporting our tax on our hospital.
Easy on your hands. Actually, you can fix anything.
This is the 302 East First property.
There's been very minimal work done on that, and all, most of it's been done by us, by pushing stuff out of the way to mow the last summer and stuff like that, but since the ice storm over a year ago when that tree came down and that stuff, nothing's been touched there at all.
Tree came down on the house?
Oh, it's down in front of the house. It's, I mean, the house isn't pretty rough repaired anyway, but then that tree came down to the northwest corner, and it's just kind of piled up there. We haven't really done anything with it.
Do you know if there's anything in it?
Oh, I'm sure there is. I haven't stuck my nose in the door, but the last time I was up there, it was pretty full.
Kidding. I think that's the only one you had for that house.
Yeah. I mean, I think everybody's seen it. We've talked about it off and on for the last year anyway. It's, it...
So what's the next step now?
No activity around it whatsoever, so...
You guys can choose to take care of it however you want. I mean, usually it's cleanup or remove. Is there a bunch of junk on the outside?
Yeah, it's surrounded by air in the house.
How Jamie and I thought we would handle this is whatever you guys do to decide, what we will do first is to double-check and make sure we've got everything in order, okay, so then kind of keep a separate file on the house. And that way, if anybody asks, you know, the due process requirements we've done, those are easy to get to, and we can show that they were. But as far as, I mean, it's your decision whether you want to abate it at this point or not. Abate it could be, if you don't find it, find an unfit structure, to have it torn down. I'm a little concerned if there's personal property on the inside, because you don't know what's hiding in there. So maybe that somebody needs to go in and check that for us. Now, if I'm not knowing?
Say you need to come down.
I carry a pistol.
Needs to come down.
Jeff, what do you think?
I worked on the house a few years back, and the last time that I was in it, I can tell you that it was, it wasn't fit to be lived in. I mean, there was, there was dogs loose in there everywhere, and you can imagine what that was, along with the trash piled up in there, some of it two and three feet tall. Might have been valuables to somebody who looked in the trash. But I don't know that we've had any luck at all contacting Mike. If he comes in and out, I haven't seen him, and I mean, I'm dumping down that street probably as much as anybody, but...
I've tried to contact Michael, and I haven't gotten anything.
I don't think there's anything that is worth saving, but that's, you know, that's my opinion, I mean.
Would you want to see if the FIBI decided to tear it down? Is there a certain timeframe that they'd done by?
No.
I mean, basically, because Marshall talked about last time us possibly tearing it down, and Jeff said probably fall time. I mean, what if they started working on it between now and then?
If they start working on it between now and then, I would suggest that you ask them to come and address council.
Because it's basically our property?
No, it's not that you're, it's not that it's your property. It's, it's for you to decide. You kind of sit as judge and jury, so it's you to decide, A, whether significant progress has been made in the given time, whether what they're doing when they do come back into town is considered progress. I mean, the cases on this are kind of wide open. You've done what you've needed to do, which is you found it unfit, and you've ordered it repaired, and they have it during the time period. You know, at some point, the city decides that it is unfit to the extent that it's bringing down values across the neighborhood. It's potentially dangerous to people that want to get into it, or, you know, where the junk accumulates water, and, you know, all the problems associated with that.
And how long's it been sitting along?
Over a year.
And then you've tried to get a hold of her son, and nothing?
Haven't been able to get a hold of him.
Did they ever get proper notice of it or anything?
Well, that's what, we're going to double-check on when we get...
Somebody signed for it?
They've been, no, they have, everything has been getting sent back.
Yeah, it's just last known address, and then that's why you publish it?
I've tried calling his place of work, and I can't get ahold of him either.
I'm not sure what kind of disrepair the house is in as far as structurally sound. It's probably as structurally or more structurally sound than some of these others that we've looked at, but it's going to take a lot of cleanup. You know, if somebody would want to dive in and remodel it and stuff, it might be in a condition that it could be remodeled instead of torn down. It's sitting on a pretty nice lot, but by the same token, that lot's pretty small to try and build anything back. So, you know, if somebody had the initiative and wanted to go in and got it completely and start over, that might be a project, you know, instead of taking it clear to the ground. But I just, I am in it so long to tell you what kind of structure, shape the structure's in.
The other option is to clean up the outside, and then those costs and expenses used in cleaning up the outside would be taxed on the property, and, you know, that gets to be so extensive that the house just gets abandoned anyways and bought at a tax sale.
And we're out our money of remodeling it?
No, no, you wouldn't remodel it.
No, I mean, the outside, the money that was invested on the outside, if we do it, we're out it if once it goes to the tax sale.
Yeah, you're, yeah, I mean, that happens annually with mowing and that kind of thing, but, yeah, you would be out it. I mean, not necessarily. You could ask that it, that, that particular house, that you do want to get paid, so the person that bids has to start that, bidding is started at that number. But usually what you do in most places is you just go ahead and waive those fees so that the property at least gets bought.
Yeah, and it'll stay like that for years. That's what, that's what happens.
And I don't know how many years it's been without taxes.
I feel like it needs to come down.
I think proper notice has been given, and no attempts have been made. We need to do something with it.
Yeah, we've made all the steps to properly get a hold of them.
Yeah, let's make sure that we've covered each and every one of the steps, because I don't want to tear someone's property down, and we miss something, and then we end up getting screwed. So I'd rather make sure that we've covered all of our bases on this before we move ahead.
And what I'll do is we'll review that, okay, and probably present to the council then the next time, or I can send a letter saying we've double-checked this, and it's my opinion that all the requirements have been met, and we're ready to...
Can you get an address from the courthouse at all, or, I mean, they promised them a tax statement, don't they? I mean, is that something you tried?
We've gotten all, I mean, whatever tax, whatever address is on the tax statement.
Taxes break up to date?
That I don't know.
So consensus, any consensus or motion or what?
We would need a motion. I want to do it on the individual houses of it.
Is it where we can make a motion? I don't know how to say it, but if we made a motion to take it down to consensus, that they have been given a proper notice at the best of our ability.
Your motion would be subject to verification that, you know, that double-check that everything was done correctly, that the city is...
Okay, so I'll put a motion to take the house down.
Subject to review of...
Subject to review of...
The steps taken to get this part. Subject to review that the steps were made, gives the city authority to tear down a property.
Second. There's a motion and a second? Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carries 5-0 on 302 East First.
Okay, then I've got 105 South Prairie. Where's that one, Troyana property?
South Prairie, is that one? Is that house, right? Okay, Ray. Ray brought us these pictures here, along with people who are working on the house, that there's been some effort made on this property, and they were wanting to ask for more time to try and take care of this property. I mean, we got the pictures here, so I don't know what you guys are thinking, or if you'd like to ask questions.
What's the roof? What's the roof look like?
Are you fixing it up for someone to live there?
If you mind, it's going to be ours. I'm renting a house on Second Street for now, so I was able to finish remodeling it and to move in.
Okay.
It's a slow process, but I am, it is in process.
It looks as if it's...
Did you just purchase the house, is that right?
In November.
November? Okay.
What work have you done on the outside of the, what work have you done on the outside of the house?
Cleaning all the trash up, repaired the fence, because the fence looks like somebody tried to run through it. I'm in the process of building two gates for the front and back of the gates, and getting all the trash out of the yard.
There's some broken windows that will be sealed up before the next meeting?
Yeah.
Was plywood or windows?
I don't know yet.
I think he said he's removed like 80 or 90 bags of trash out of the backyard and...
Not to mention, we've done hauls anywhere from eight, 12 truckloads before I got a dumpster brought there.
He has a dumpster through Unruh.
And I've dumped, throwed about 90 bags away in the dumpster now, and there's probably 20, 25 left. That's just out of the house.
What's council think so far?
I guess if you're willing to fix it up and keep, as long as we see progress, means...
I'm fine with it, as long as there's progress still made. Because I got my business on the line for this, for this house, too, so...
As long as progress is being made and you're continuously improving on it, I don't have a problem with extending it for you, so.
Council want a review. We don't need to do anything, we just keep it on the agenda. You want to review it, put that agenda on for two months or...
How about two months?
Two months?
Unless anyone objects to that?
Ask for some updated pictures and...
Somebody check the roof out.
Jerry, how's the roof on that?
Roof is solid.
Roof is solid.
Yes. But by next summer, that roof will be gone anyways, and putting a metal roof on it anyway.
And then 104 West, or 104 Southwest, Southwest Street?
What was the address again?
104 Southwest Street?
Is that the corner store?
Roof is junk.
It was a corner store.
I talked to that gal on the phone about, I don't know, three weeks ago, I guess. I'm not sure. She lives in Oklahoma somewhere. I don't know whether she's the one that's financing the repairs or what the deal was, but she told me that it says whether that nice, they were going to try and work on it and get it done. I told her that council was fairly adamant about getting these cleaned up, but...
Is that your property, Sheriff?
No.
Because I see you're nodding, shaking your head and nodding, that's why.
I know the person.
I'm sorry?
I know the person.
Okay.
She is not in Oklahoma. She was because of medical. She's not in Oklahoma now.
But she's not now.
And there has been progress on the outside of that house, and they have their intention of working on it.
That was the way she explained it to me, but I don't know how much help she's getting locally for getting that done, but I had told her, and I kind of stepped on my tongue that day, because I didn't realize my resolution, that I couldn't stretch it out for, that it had to come across council table. I mean, I've tried twice to get a hold ever since, haven't been able to talk to her, but the day I talked to her, I talked to her for probably 10 minutes. She was very adamant about getting it cleaned up, but, of course, you know, in the wintertime's kind of a harder time to do it, but I told her, I said the council would probably only do it in the respect that they must see some progress, some steady progress, or we're going to fight to have it cleaned up, so that's kind of where I left it there. That's the only time I've talked to her, so...
My understanding was there's also a possibility that it's a historical site.
That that building would be a historical site?
There's something, I don't understand the details, but there's something connected in there, yeah.
Do you know anything about that, Jeff?
No, I don't.
I actually don't.
See any progress on it or not?
The thing about seeing progress is that you can work on it little by little for two years, and at the end of the two years, it's barely noticeable, but it's noticeable. And I think if one of those deals, if we're going to be doing that, needs to be, everything on it structurally needs to be good, as far as the windows and broken or fallen down siding, I think it needs to be consensus where it's fixed 100% by a certain date. That's my opinion on it.
The roof is junk on that building. If you don't put a new roof on it, you don't...
I mean, if you, if you kind of think, Jeff, that she is looking at really getting into that, that's, that's the only reason I'd like to proceed letting her do it, is by making sure everything on it is structurally fixed and everything by a certain date. What's your opinion on that?
You know, I guess you can give her a little bit of time to see some major progress, changes done on it. If not, well, I don't think I'd back that line. I, you know, you either fix it or, because I can't see, now, I myself, and I go by there fairly regularly, I was by there today, I can't see any major improvements since back when Dorson I looked at it in December, so...
She lets you go in to the inside?
I never ask, I don't know.
You don't have to fix it?
I'm pretty sure that the inside of it's gutted.
It is.
Are we talking about the same property?
The corner store?
Yeah. The reason Jeff said she was not in the area, she was in Oklahoma, taking, she's a nurse, and she was taking care of people down there, but she is back, and they are definitely wanting to do something with it. They're as concerned as the rest, some of the rest of us, in beautifying this cotton pickin' town, and they don't want to see it go to junk. And so they, they have plans for it, but she's pretty handicapped, and so it's been a long, hard process. I talked with her about it.
My biggest concern on that building is just the roof. I mean, that thing, it looks like it's about ready to fall over. Somebody looked at it cross-eyed, you know. I don't have a problem with giving someone enough time to fix it up, but I don't know if there's going to be any significant amount of work that can bring it up to snuff within 60 days.
My thing is, is this is the second public hearing we've had on all these properties, and they've come to this one on their property to show improvement. No one has showed up at any of the other ones. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, if they haven't made change by now, we shouldn't even be discussing it.
Very little teams, I think plywood, a couple windows, Jeff?
Well, it was done, but...
Been there quite a while.
That's inflexible glass, yeah, my glass.
Has anyone, has anyone, have they had somebody look at the roof, you know?
Well, I don't know, the wind had the tin flipped over on top of it the other day, so I mean, the rest of it can't be much better. And there's still, I think there's still an open door or something there to it.
The structure is...
What's the cost to put a roof on it?
We're just delaying, if we're going to go 30 days, 60 days on this property, we gave them time, you know, there could be work being done on it. I mean, it's cold, but it's going to take $150,000 just for someone to live in there.
Yeah.
Built the house in the old winter. I worked on it, inside, outside.
Which is tough.
If you want something done, you got to work at it.
So it's council think?
I'd just soon get rid of it as well.
Same motion?
Same motion.
And then finish it off.
Subject to my verification that there's the requirements.
I would make that motion.
Motion on the table. Sanders and Christie, 104 Southwest Street, pending the proper review. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Approves. One, Ryan.
Not that I don't trust the photography skills of staff or anybody in the room. I'll probably bring my camera and take pictures of the house, it's what I know of, so, just for the record, next week for the next council meeting. I think that's it. Those three?
Excuse me, there's been an ongoing battle about that property. Has to do with the water line on the corner, and the city's wanting that, I guess, and so there's, this has been part of the problem, wanting to condemn because of, and it's, it's their property, and that's part of what's...
The water line's in the street.
At the street, yeah.
It's in the street.
But they're wanting to curb it or something. I don't know what it was, I don't understand all that, but I know this is part of the problem.
We're going to straighten out the road, but we weren't going back up on the property.
I guess I need to give them the wrong information.
I have no knowledge of, I have no knowledge of that.
I have no knowledge of that, and I started this project, so I don't know what you're speaking of.
Because we service the house south of it now, and the water line's in the street. The drainage has got some problems, yeah, but I mean, we're not going to go any further back than right. We have no intentions of going back any farther than right way.
There's no, no reason to.
No, no.
Is that it? Okay, just closing the public hearing there for the housing violations. Moving on to department head and committee reports, grant administrator Lisa Cornwell.
The TEE study was out and done last week. They'll have a report to us in six to eight weeks, which I thought was kind of lengthy, but that's when it'll come. The SEDARPA sent the Save Routes to School contract, and I think he's got that, so he's got that to sign. The pool, the splash pad, the $20,000 we have, we're not going to get to that this year with all the pool, stuff going on at the pool. If we want to, I could write a grant to South Central Community Foundation and try to get a match on that, and we could leave that grass area open this year and work on that for next year. If you want to save that grant, or we can turn the grant back. There's also portable splash pads that you can get where you could have it at the Jubilee, you could take it to the pool. I, my personal opinion would be to write another grant, try to get more money and do it next year. If that's what you'd like to do. And what else do I know? Oh, we talked, Jeff and I talked about doing a dog park where the old tennis court used to be and there's a PetSave grant that I'm gonna apply for in June. It's open May thirty first to June thirty.
What's all that? Dog park consists of? What's it?
Oh, it's grass and play toys and pooper scoopers, you know?
It's just a park only for dogs.
A dog park? Big sign out on the highway that says, we have a dog park.
People like that stuff.
Gotta block people from town.
People like to let their dogs run in the track and not pick up their poop and so then there'd be an area.
You just shift it from down here in the square to up there. That's my house. Up our Ryan's.
You're breaking in after the dog. You can stand all the poop you want to be around. You even had to take a shower before you came in.
Break for Southland, Ryan, that's all I know.
It's after fifty thousand.
To fifty, yeah. On that splash pad, you said an additional amount, so you're thinking on top of the twenty? Am I getting that right?
I'm probably right for another twenty.
Twenty's not gonna scare it very much.
And you, you think they'll let us not use it this year?
They said they would let us, yeah.
We just think with all the stuff that it involves that there's, you know, we thought about maybe we could give some time. There's some private donations, maybe some of that stuff too. Look into that a little bit. Cause there's, you can get into.
So what does it cost to put one in?
You can get into an extreme amount of money.
You know, we could do it for twenty thousand, a real, just some splashes with their work, with their cement pad. They'd have to do the work with it and we could do something minimal.
Yeah.
But if you want nice splash pads, like Ellen was, it was what, a hundred and ten?
It was a hundred or a hundred and ten. And I haven't seen all the objects, the little toys and stuff that go in there because they plug them off in the winter time. But I know the city administrator pretty well and he told me that, of course, he's kind of like I am, that he thought it was a little extreme, but then the city didn't finance it, you know, so. Anyway, the stuff that Lisa sent us, we thought that the, that the deals that stick up and that stuff were probably as reasonable as anything we'd seen. In fact, David and I were really shocked at some of them, how cheap they were compared to what we'd looked at in the past, so. But I just think with the maintenance problems that we got up there and what it's gonna take this spring, that we probably better not dive into it. I, I just don't think we'd get it all done. We're just gonna end up with a mess, so.
Jeff, go ahead.
We get dirt stirred up around there, you know, we can't cover that grass back up and the wind comes up and it ends up in the pool and then we got a whole nother problem, so.
Is there provisions you could leave for when you have some of the concrete? Of course, you're not tearing out on the, on the south side of the pool.
We're gonna try everything we can to keep from doing that. We think the problem is on the north side, so.
Just thinking about if you could maybe rough some pipes in while you have.
Well, at least and I talked about that. If it comes to that and we open that up, we will rough something in to be able to get pressure to it and suction back away from it before we cover it up. So there'd be something we wouldn't have to do twice, yeah, yeah. So we're just not sure what all we're gonna run into. We know that we've got something broke somewhere that to return is not getting back into the pool. I think part of it, you know, we're gonna open up some on the southeast corner in between there and the baby pool to try and alleviate, we don't know, we've got a broken valve in there that shut off or what it is, but we're fixing to find out, so anyway. Thirty days' time, I'll probably know more than.
How deep is that pipe and stuff under that?
About two foot. It's not very deep. Cause it's only there for drains and returns. I mean, wherever the suction is on the side, that's where the pipe is. I mean, they're made to be drained in the winter time and not, not the way that they've been done in the past.
I just didn't know thermal imaging, be able to see that during the summertime.
You know, it probably would, but that's gonna cause us to go into, I mean, we can go another year and try and do it.
I'm just saying if that doesn't, if you find, if you work on it this year and you don't find all the problems, you could do that during the summertime.
You know, we found some stuff last spring that was clear off the wall of what we thought it was. I mean, it's just, and two, the pool's thirty years old this year. It was thirty-two years old this year. So it, it was bound to need some maintenance, but just from what David and I've run into in the past, we think that it could have been drained a better way and probably created a lot of, alleviated a lot of problems that we've run into now. But one good look at it, we know we've got two valves that are spun off that want to replace for sure. That may help part of our circulation problem, but we won't know for a little while yet. But as soon as we get it opened up and we kind of got an idea where we're headed, then we'll let you know, so.
Lisa, has the grant opened up for the Fifth Street that you talked to us about a few meetings ago?
No, it hasn't. And Matt Messina said he wasn't sure whether that was gonna open up this year. KDOT, their grants have changed some. He said we, he was sure that we could get streetscaping. He's not sure we can get street. May first, they'd know.
Okay, okay.
I'm staying on topic now.
Okay, well, I'm just curious if you hear anything.
Were you done? Been wanting to look into affordable housing for us in St. John's. Is there any grant that you could look into with affordable housing for us? As far as us coming up with, I don't know how the grant part of it works, but maybe some reasonable sized houses that are, that are simple and we could build for cheap. But I don't know if there's any grants that could help with that at all.
Like what Carolyn's doing?
No.
Like duplexes you're talking about, you say?
No, I mean, even simpler than those, like really just some simpler homes, no eaves, just simple homes like that. The ones that Carolyn have are, are a little more expensive than what even I'm thinking. So I, I don't know how the grants work, if they pay a percentage of it. If we could even build it and sell it or if we finance it all, if we find a way to help get it financed. But I think it'd be great to do something with one house and see how that goes and maybe start to build houses in town, because we're tearing them down too fast.
I can get you some information on housing grants.
Just different options and then we can work off, work off of something like that.
I wanna go back to the BG Consultants Agreement for Save Routes to School here. It shows cost on that, seventy-five hundred dollars.
Paid by the Save Routes to School grant, that doesn't come free?
Paid by the grant, so we're good to go there, because the council's already approved to go through. I wanted to double check and make sure we were good to go there. Okay, thank you. Is that all for Lisa? Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to Police Chief Adam Saylor report. He's on vacation. Did you have anything for him? Thank you, Aaron. Fire chief, Mr. Sanders around the corner there.
Everybody got any policies and procedures? Anybody have any questions on any of that? I was gonna read it and I saw it was thirty-six pages long. I guess, is that something, because you guys are paid. Well, I mean, we're, yeah, we're. I don't know if you guys want something incorporated into the handbook eventually. We have no policies for the fire department right now, so that's why.
Well, they're, they're covered under the city handbook.
Right.
Like Adam has his own handbook, but it just can't be anything less strict of what we have, correct?
More strict. Or yeah, less strict.
It can't be less than what we have.
He can be more strict.
We can be more restrictive.
Right. And that's, I think that's stated in the handbook that while this is the whole city, department heads are allowed to have their own.
And that's what we've kind of gone through and done in years. Cause some of those codes are pretty outdated. I mean, in fact, some of the codes need to be changed.
I think, I think it ought to be a separate deal from our employee handbook, because the employees are, it's their job and I find it to be different that than the volunteer fire department, a different deal.
They're still getting paycheck from the city as well, but I mean, having another step under the city.
There's like nondiscrimination stuff, socializing stuff in the employees handbook. It's probably not in your handbook. That, that's the kind of thing that would cover. These are specific towards. Yeah, towards fire, right. I, I would, it's up to you guys. If you, again, I, I sat down, I had a very busy weekend. I sat down and reviewed it and saw that was thirty-six pages long. I'd just wait to see what the intent behind it was first before I put the title.
Most of them are all shadowed off of the county anyway.
Yeah, I mean, most of them, yeah.
Most of them.
It wasn't like the way it just got changed or anything from?
Nope. Basically, everything just talks about. Chain of commands and, I mean, it goes through everything. How things are supposed to be ran on the fire department. Let's see. Talks about members and, and conduct and, and meeting requirements and fire requirements and just basically everything in the code just is down for us. We got a little more strict on a few things, but.
Yeah, I think something good to have. Do you want the opportunity to?
If you guys direct me to, I guess I, I just, it was a little much for the time period I had that I thought I was gonna do it, so I.
Was this an email?
It was the email that said, I'll make you a copy if you'd like, but I'm not printing off thirty-six pages for everyone.
I didn't read it.
What's council think? Do you want John to review it?
Let, let's give John some time to review it.
You can adopt it subject to my, I'll review it if I don't have any issues, I don't bring it up. You can go ahead and adopt it today, subject to my review, and I'll read it tonight and email Jamie. I just mark on it that they council approves it. Yeah, yeah, we got, we got. Oh, okay. We got a place when they approve, but we'll print off the copy and get the final copy. Everything, we got everything digital, so.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the standard operating guideline policy pro to call for the St. John's Fire Department pending John's approval.
So moved.
Motion and a second. My Brian and Christie, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? We'd have, we had two. We had two vote, two abstain, three abstain.
It doesn't pass.
Doesn't pass. Would you guys like?
Can we vote on that or not?
Would you guys like?
Because I don't like to be in conflict is the only thing.
I don't see the conflict. You're not, you're not getting help retirement, I guess. You're not getting anything out. You're talking about because it's your brother?
No, because I'm on the fire department.
Well, that me vote. You're the chief.
Was this the chief? Are you on the fire department?
He's on the fire department too.
Would you guys like to offer your reasons for abstaining?
Whether you think it, whether it's a conflict or not is a personal matter. If you don't think it's a conflict because you're gonna follow the rules, then go ahead and vote.
Well, if he doesn't follow the rules, he's gonna get kicked off. Pretty plain.
Then I will change mine to a yes vote instead of abstaining.
That's a three-three vote. That means today you're gonna vote.
That's three-two.
Three-two approves. Three-two. Chris, Sanders, Brian. Let's see this, the door abstain.
That's all I have.
Thank you. City clerk, Jamie. Stop.
I don't have anything.
Do it, bro.
What?
I like that even better.
Heck, yeah.
Order on the Dylan's building afterwards.
Oh, darn it.
Why do you start?
I do have something. Ryan.
That's why you make the big one.
I have to leave at six in the morning.
She was trying to hold off.
He goes for another three hours here, so. I don't have to get up early in the morning.
So if we want to go with vinyl, it's gonna cost fourteen hundred dollars.
And what's that do? I mean, is there any design or is it plain?
It's plain, but then that leaves us the option of being able to add like decals for like the Jubilee or the events or spring or whatever you want to do with it. But then she also sent something about like just thermal panel drapes. And I haven't had a chance to call her today. She just sent this over this afternoon. And basically what I feel like those are just drapes on the inside, so that's not really.
Almost like just straight.
It's, I mean, that's how it is now, so.
Trading one thing for another on that one.
Correct.
Can we put a vinyl thing up there that says, move your business here?
Well, that, I mean, yeah, we want.
Nice advertising billboard.
Might work against you next time by counting it. It's plastic, it's usable, going or not.
Okay, scratch that. That first one word that he said, that's a vinyl that's on it?
Yeah, like they would go, they would order the vinyl and then attach the vinyl and just, it would be complete sheets of vinyl. She said that someone was gonna get me like a design, like even design something to be put on there, on the vinyl, but they haven't sent anything.
I just like, I like the idea of the drapes, just because you can change out pictures. Each time there's a Christmas event or Jubilee or something, you just move the drapes, put your pictures on the window and put your drapes back and those can be interchanged. I'd just say spend good money on drapes, good quality ones, so that your son doesn't eat them up really fast. That's my opinion on it.
My only issue with that is the outside, like, cause those will be inside and the outside of the building itself is just, the windows are in horrible shape and we need, which we'll, we'll have to figure out something to frame and, I don't know, whatever you call it, like the outside of the window, the trim, I guess. Like we'd need.
The framework around them is in pretty rough shape the way it is.
Yeah.
So it's gonna take some major repair on those windows if you do anything very much to them.
It's major money.
It's a major money, yes.
I mean, we can get the vinyl.
The vinyl will cover up just being a band-aid over the top of it where you're still looking at the front.
The problem is still there, no matter what.
You're looking for.
Just, I just want something better than what it looks like right now.
Fourteen hundred dollars is over my spending limit.
What about other ideas?
Right.
But what else can we do over there? It's nice.
Outside of, outside of breaking the windows in and putting some win, nice windows in it, I don't know what you do. And that's a lot of money.
Find someone to be in there. What are we gonna do with that building? I think before we shovel.
We're gonna make a nice grocery store.
I think if we, I think we need to decide what we're gonna do with it before we shovel a bunch of, like, I know it's an eyesore, but if we're not gonna keep it or if we want.
We need to define what its purpose is. Need to define what its purpose is. Are we keeping it? Are we gonna move city offices in there? Are we gonna make it into a shop? Are we gonna do this? What are we gonna do with it? I mean, we need to find a purpose for it before we start putting dollars into it, cause if we go put fourteen hundred dollars on the windows now and next week we wanna sell it and do something with it, you know, I mean, or if we say, oh, we're gonna do something else and spend twenty-five thousand dollars on it, I mean.
And I communicated a little bit with Lisa, which I never found the square footage of that building. I think I talked to Jeff a little bit about it, but.
We can measure, I forgot all about it, but we can measure and give you an estimate of about what's there.
They've communicated a little bit about like a gym.
They have a thousand dollar grant that four places in the state of Kansas get and it's all gym equipment. And so we need a space that I can't remember how big at this point, a space that was so big to put it in.
Well, it's a great idea, but I mean, who'd run it? Is it something that we could?
I don't know. I have no.
Is it something that we could?
That would also be an option.
Is it something we could do and sell it to somebody as a business or not?
I feel like, I mean, cause the school was kind of in, like, I think it's her Josh.
It's a school grant.
So I, you know, it could even be a possibility the city and the school could partner together and figure out how to run it. And that's a possibility. Cause you get the.
I know the rec center's been wanting to move.
Right, yeah.
Oh, I don't believe they're gonna be, they're not building a building from what I understand.
They're not gonna pursue building a building.
That's what I understand.
What about potentially looking into the rec center being there? I know, I mean, I know they're wanting to leave there because that building is really in bad shape. I mean, what, what's the status of this?
Is that our building?
Right, but I mean, it's, it's what are we wanting to do? I'm trying to find re, you know, purposes for it. What, what are the alternatives? Do you wanna sink money into two buildings? Do you wanna sink money into one building? What, what are, what are the alternatives for it, you know?
We're getting off task. It was about the drapes first. I'd say, I think it'd be a good idea. I mean, if we all went around and got ideas or seen if somebody's interested in something for a business or like we're talking about, and maybe the next meeting, let's all come back and throw out one really good idea or something.
I mean, vinyl's not that hard to put on. I can look and try to see what I can find for outdoor vinyl and I can figure out how to throw it on there.
Sounds like a great council shopping.
Well, I think, I think you could.
It gets spent pretty fast, too.
I think, I think that I could find outdoor vinyl that were cheaper than fourteen hundred dollars even. And we could just figure out how, Pam's really good at, at projects like that, so.
That's right under the desk.
Oh, my man. I don't know if you're probably gonna, I mean, you'll probably find it cheaper, but outdoor vinyl's expensive. I don't know if you're probably gonna, I mean, you'll probably find it cheaper, but outdoor vinyl's expensive. There's probably, I know there's a couple people in town you could talk to.
I have planned on going back to her.
So by vinyl, are we talking like the sticker material or the see-through stuff? What?
Vinyl, vinyl would, well, I mean, you can get both, it's all vinyl, but. The see-through stuff is, what was it, double?
It was like thirty-eight hundred dollars, I think.
Yeah. So that's why we came up with this idea.
Well, nothing's just hit me in across the face yet that I like.
Plus the cost of brick.
I can tell you what the drinking fountain's gonna cost here in a little bit, you make your estimation for that.
I'll keep working on it, how about that?
I think we need to, we need to figure out what, what the band-aid's gonna be. Grapes or vinyl or shades or whatever.
We need something by jubilee and it's gonna sneak around real fast.
Yeah, I'd like to make a decision.
So bring it back to next council meeting?
You might ask, you might ask the recommissioner.
Well, I mean, I've looked at everything. I can look at different prices. You guys are gonna be the ones that have to figure out what you wanna do. Um, Mark, did you want me to bring up your meter?
Nah.
Okay.
We can do that next, uh, next meeting.
Okay.
Is that for you, Jamie? Moving on, city superintendent Jeff Williamson.
Well, I have a shopping list tonight. It's nothing major, but first thing is, we need to buy a set of four tires for the rack of that grader. The ones we got are about down at the racing slicks. They, uh, we laid quite a bit asphalt in them last year. I'm glad we didn't have any snows because this year we'd have to replace them by now, but. The least expensive tire we found is through Marshall, they're twelve hundred fifty dollars a piece, it takes four. So.
He needs all four?
We need all four. I'm sorry, we can't do front and back on this deal, cause all four drivers.
They're radial.
What vehicle was that?
On the grader. So it's five thousand dollars for a set.
Fourteen hundred, twenty-four. That's tires, O-rings, labor to put them on, disposal of tires, that's lock, stock, car.
And it costs, right?
Yep, I'm making absolutely no money doing it.
Thanks for the clarification, Jeff.
Out of the generosity.
Out of the goodness of his heart.
Just, just.
Are you gonna change all this one, too?
Just for the video, Jeff, though, how many, did you, you talked to other people, price the tires?
We get a price in Goodyear every time we do this, and I can tell you that this is quite a better bargain. And Goodyear has federal government discounts, and these tires are cheaper than that, so.
Where's that?
Do we have a requirement, John, of three bids or anything on this? Not, I know, I, I'd want to talk to Marshall, Marshall gives good bids. I didn't know if there was a requirement.
In the past, we've always tried to get at least three, but when we could, when we could.
Marshall can't vote.
Yeah. Marshall's not gonna vote. Marshall's not voting. Okay, all right. Would I entertain a motion?
I move that we've spent five thousand dollars on tires on the grader.
Motion on the table.
Sanders.
Motion on the table to spend five thousand dollars on tires for the road grader through S and S Tire.
And then put in that motion that if Jeff happens to find anybody cheaper, that he has to accept the cheaper bid. Between that and order the others.
Okay. And in addition to, if we receive another bid, to, to take the cheaper bid.
Yeah, just to.
Before the time of the service.
Or bring it back to council or something, just to be honest with us.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Brian, seconds, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Three-two abstain, let's see this, Sanders.
Um, next thing is, we talked last council meeting about how much the city would do about tearing down these houses and getting rid of them, and, you know, made the suggestion that we'd like to look for a thumb for that backhoe. I stopped at Murphy's the other day when I was up on some other business, and they tell me that as old as that backhoe is, that's just clear out of realm of possibility. That tractor's twenty years old. It did not come with auxiliary hydraulics on the back of it and the valves. They, they don't make the valve anymore, they've gone out of production, so if you find any, he said your chances of getting one that was as good as the one that was on your tractor are pretty slim. By the time that you put the valve on, if you wanna do it so that it's a factory type, use steel and not a lever over here off the side of the cabway. He said you're looking at ten to twelve thousand dollars. I told him that is clear out of the reach of what we would look at. What he advised to me was that if we got into a deal like that, and we wanted to lease like a small excavator, that might be the way to go. I think first, we tackle this house down here on second, we do it with claws and the stuff that we've got, see how we get along from there. So, before we ever step off and spend any money.
Does, does not Chad Fisher have a backhoe with him?
He has an excavator with him. But, I mean, you know.
A hundred dollars an hour, you can have Chad come down and get stuff off.
He said the thing was, he said, I could lease you one for a month. If you had five houses you were gonna tear down, he said cost about five thousand dollars for the month, and you just go to town. But we do have a loader, and we do have a skid steer that both have claws on them. We'll see how we get along, you know? We did it with a lot less than that before. I just really, when I started thinking about that, I just didn't think it'd be quite that extreme, but, but in order to make it fit the body of the hoe design for the way it was, it's, it's not even a possibility, so. We'll kick that one out. When we, some of you may know, some of you don't, we bought a used service bed here a few weeks back and put it on the two thousand seven Chevrolet that we got. When the council decided to keep that old gray Dodge, why, we did some shuffling around and took the flat bed off that pickup and put it on that gray Dodge. Uh, the bed off of that pickup is sitting out behind the shop, and I've had a couple inquiries about wanting to get rid of it. It doesn't have a lot of value, but I've had a guy that would like to make a trash trailer out of it and that, and so. Um, I just thought maybe the council might just accept a little short bid deal to get rid of it. We were gonna put it in the iron pile, but I guess it does have a little value, so. The front bed, the front part of that bed's cracked really bad, but I guess it'll still haul leaves or whatever the case may be, so.
What do you think?
Counsel doesn't care, we'll run it up till next meeting, you know, for a bid. It brings twenty bucks, it brings twenty bucks, you know?
Whatever you can get out of it.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be sealed bids?
I suppose, yeah.
That'd be fine.
And then Jamie can put it out on Facebook or something. We don't have to advertise it, spend a lot of money on it, but just the bed and the bumpers there, you know, if somebody's gonna have it, so. Anyway, um, next thing is, I got two weeks notice of, of a guy leaving this morning, Chris Smith, turned in his two weeks. Um, so, um, would like to look to see if we could replace him. I don't know what kinda applications we'd get. I would like to, you know, if it was winter time, I wouldn't push quite so hard, summertime with things coming up the way we are, we're gonna miss him.
And as far as his position went, I know we've kinda shifted around.
He just worked in, you know, on the, just basically on the, the utility side, but, but he did, he did help Dave with road work, and, and the kid could run a backhoe, and. I mean, you know, we'd like to have somebody, have a little bit of talent, so, um, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to advertise for somebody. We have some applications in here, I'd like to go through them. And if, you know, somebody, if somebody comes along that looks like they'll work, then we'll go talk to council about it.
What's the, what would, what would the position you would be seeking, what would it technically be?
It would be mostly, uh, it'd be mostly streets and parks, and, and some water work, too, but this time of year, it'd be street and park work most of it would be. I don't know if they could run equipment, that would be a plus, but, uh, that's basically, I mean, he runs a street sweeper, stuff like that, so. But he also would repair water leaks, so we did a little line work with him. Not a lot, but some. So just an all-around, somebody in the shop, you know, so.
Have you had any luck on applications for your lineman position?
That's what I wanted the executive session later on for. I do have one here that I wanna discuss with you later. What else? I guess that's basically it for now.
What do you guys think as far as replacing that?
Oh, the, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's under new business.
Oh, it is?
I would go ahead and just allow them to do that, I don't have a problem with that, if we can get someone to create, to replace.
I don't know, I think we were overstaffed this winter. Personally, I, I think it'd be best to, to hire part-time help, because, I mean, I think the rest of the guys could help with the kind of water leaks and stuff, and maybe. Hire a couple of high school kids with the mowing, because like you're saying, it is busy spring and summer, that's what I'd like to do.
I would have to argue that point, and the reason is that I don't think you ever walked in a shop today and you found anybody sitting. If I had eight guys, I could get them busy every day. I got a list in my back pocket for the next three years.
Oh, yeah.
And so, uh, this is the least amount of staff the city's ever had, ever had, in the twenty-five, twenty-eight years that I've been here. So, I would like to replace him with a full-time person, because I can use a full-time person. So, um, you know, if you choose not to, that's your problem, for my argument, um, I could use two guys right now, they're really good. I have no lineman, I have one lineman, that's what I have. Uh, we were training him, we did work out, uh, I have a kid that I wanna talk to council about here after we did. But still, that's, uh, that's even short of a three-man line crew that we've kept forever. We got twenty-six mile line to maintain, let alone the fifty miles of street and the water and the sewer and everything else, so. You know, these guys, even, there isn't any of these guys been here over two years, but they're all learning, but they're, you have to rely on them twenty-four hours a day, and so. Uh, if I don't have them, I can't teach them, so, you know.
Who did that position report to? Who did he report to at this?
He reported to David, yes. So.
He was, his official title was the utility, he's under the utility, though. Not under parts.
He was paid, he was paid out of the water, but most of the time, he reported to, to the, the street and park department, so.
Okay.
What's your opinion, David?
I, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna butt heads with Jeff, but I, I see more in the winter where we're, you know, cleaning the shop, things like that, where we, we could get by with maybe a part-time and just hiring summer. But Jeff also needs linemen. I'm not arguing that a bit.
Well, it's a different position.
Yeah, it, that, that is, I mean, that's out of my league. But in the summer, we could have two more guy, two or three more guys. Um, you know, I, me and Jason talked a little bit today, um, after work. I, I think we could, um, get, you know, whoever's here can take care of the winter. You know, if we have a leak or something like that, um, you know, we can jump on it. Every now and again, would it be nice to have somebody else? Yeah, I would. But for the broad spectrum of the winter, I think it's pretty slow.
My biggest argument is that it's hard to train a guy and keep him for months and sit him out to the door.
That's the thing, I don't know if you can get someone.
Right.
For the part-time business.
Yeah, you know, part-time's great, but we, we've got to some part-time guys that I would just as soon choke them as use them.
Yeah, I think, I think at this time, we have a pretty fair crew, and I don't think adding more to their plate when, when we do get busy and when we are slow, that's kinda the, the nice part about the job, is there is times that you don't know which way you're going. There's other times you're getting this project done that you had to put off because you've been so busy, so. Man, I think we need to replace that position if it's a budgeted position, and, and we've used that position, and, you know, it hasn't been a waste, I mean, I, I would entertain replacing that person.
Jeff, do you, do you plan on hiring summer help as well this year?
We might try to hire lawn. I, I think, I think the part, the street maintenance, you know, the way that we're milling asphalt and that stuff now, most of the time, that's a two-man job. While everybody else is busy, the milling can get done and that, and then when it's time to gather up and haul and that stuff, then we kinda jump together and do that, so. I, but mowing, you know, we mow a lot of acres of grass, a lot of acres, and, and still, we still have, uh, you know, street sweeper stuff to run, we have grader stuff to run, I mean, there's. There's not a day goes by that the guys are sitting around picking their nose, I mean, we just have plenty to do. But I understand David's point, too, but I'm still in fear that, you know, it'd have to be somebody that, the summer help that we've had in the past. You know, they're not, they're not guys that, that you really can depend on.
They're high school kids, and we typically put them on millers.
Most of them.
But I'm saying.
And we end up repairing the stuff they destroyed, so.
Do we, do we, are we budgeted for a realignment position, Jamie, you think?
Um, I was very worried about it before I got the notice that Chris was leaving. With Chris leaving, I mean, I'll have to play with the numbers more, but with Chris leaving, I was gonna, and I didn't go through any of the numbers because he's leaving, I didn't know if Chris was gonna request to replace on top of that, so.
And we don't have to.
Like, I was just worried about the numbers, cause the numbers weren't matching up before all of this, so it just has me a little worried.
So we have two weeks.
And it, wouldn't it be something, Jeff, where if the lineman that you eventually hire, when they're not doing line work, this guy could take over what Chris was doing and absorb that?
Everybody else does.
Right.
I mean, that's the way it works, you know?
I mean, is that essentially?
If he's, if he's a good hand, which we think he's probably gonna be, why, yeah, it might work that way. I'm not gonna say it won't.
Right.
I just know that sometimes when you crowd these guys, kinda hard it backfires on you, so.
What's counsel think?
I actually wanna wait until next meeting. I wanna see about if we hire a lineman, I wanna give Jamie a chance to do some looking at our position. Will we give the option to go ahead and fill that other position? That's where I stand on it for now. That's two weeks.
Seems reasonable. Looking at the numbers.
I mean, I, I don't wanna say yes to everything, and then we come back next meeting and find out if we put our.
Sure, sure. Everybody agree with that?
Yeah, I think that's a fair assessment.
Let Jamie do some checking, see what comes with the rest of the meeting?
Can you make him apply at any time for a city position, right?
Mm-hmm.
What did we do with the police department at one time? We, we weren't looking for a police officer.
Eligibility list.
You know, I mean, is that something?
People could just apply for an open position or not even?
I mean, not that we're gonna accept it.
I don't know, if you could start advertising for a spot, but not actually have one?
Maybe I'll just wait.
Right. I see where you're going with that, but. Okay. What else, Jeff?
That's it.
Thank you, Jeff. Moving on, city attorney, John?
Nothing.
Nothing? All right. Moving on to old business, swimming pool. Kinda covered that already?
Yeah, well, I think I put in your gracious packet the list that Stephanie submitted to Jeff.
I think Mark had asked for her to send that up here last time when she came to talk, just to get the list that she.
The list is there, I know Jeff and her have discussed it, um, I spoke with Jeff today, and, I mean, these are on our list of things to do, so.
Cool.
Definitely things.
It's the same question you have.
Um, as far as, I think we talked about it when Stephanie was here, but as far as when she has concerns and things, our expectation is for her to go to Jeff. Is that correct?
Jeff, her department head or whatever, I mean, I'm assuming she.
Who's her department head?
It would be David.
Okay.
Well, because I mean. Falls under parks and stuff.
Kinda hearing, yeah. I'm kinda hearing it's a, it's a miscommunication of who to go to and how to get stuff done, so. I mean, we don't necessarily need to be dealing with painting signs and things like that, I mean, that needs to go to our crew.
As far as that list you have, what are you planning on tackling this year, then?
All of it we can. I mean, we've got the same list, we've got leak problems, you know, we got, uh, fill problems, we got.
Right.
I mean, you name it, there's nothing on that list that, that's not on our list to repair.
I guess, I would just advise, you know, if somebody has a problem with somebody that their supervisor have a problem, bringing something to them that.
I think it was kinda, they, they just didn't necessarily know who we're supposed to go to in that situation, cause maybe it hasn't been followed in the past or something, so I just wanted to make that clear.
I'm not, I'm not making decisions on wooden shop rooms and poles and.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, is.
We've got more important stuff to take care of than that stuff.
I guess if it's not getting done, then.
Right, then you move out of the chain. That's a different, you move out of the chain. So, that's the understanding is that the pool manager reports to.
And it's just, you know, a lot of it was maintenance stuff. I mean, um, there isn't anything on there. Some of it is gonna get changed, like the water on, on the, the slipper slide, that stuff. Stuff that didn't run with the garden hose for years. You know, we're gonna have the concrete tore up. We're gonna try and make it something, more feasible. The kids don't trip over. Um, just weather, it tore the awning up. You know, I mean, it's just stuff like that that, that's on the list to be maintained anyway, so.
Okay. Anything else on swimming pool?
So, you're hoping to jump on that before too long, Jeff?
I hope in the next couple of weeks. See what the weather does here. So, sooner we can get on it, why sooner we can find those leaks and then we can get started, so.
Okay. And then we had the transformer on there, but we've already taken care of that. So, moving on to well two.
I've really just left that on, Jeff, for you to be able to do your.
Ryan, Ryan and I met today. Um, we've both got some ideas. We're gonna try and put some numbers to it and some different ideas about where we think we ought to head with this. Ryan feels like I do, that we don't want to run treated water back out of that wellhouse. But we also realize that there's going to be quite an expense involved in trying to take water back out of that well. So, um, we're just gonna, we're each gonna look at some stuff and we're gonna get back together and see what we can bring to you, so.
Okay.
I don't think it's gonna be a short-term fix, but we'll see.
Right. Okay. Thank you. And no other old business, move on to new businesses, uh, ordinances and city code. Where's that going?
Uh, that was with me, yeah. I think what we need to do is we need to, um, have a workshop and we need to go over each of these ordinances and city codes and we need to look at what is relevant and what isn't. When, if we are not going to be enforcing certain things, then we need to go ahead and take them off the books. And if we are going to be enforcing them, we need to clarify everything on it. And there are some wording on there that I think needs to be cleared up, so. That's my thoughts on the whole thing. So, I think we need to schedule a workshop at some point. We've been meeting to do this for quite some time and it hasn't gotten done. So, we need to do it, so.
Is this something that's better handled by a, a committee and brought to council or the council's a whole workshops or setting in with you?
Oh, I, I guess it kind of depends on, you know, the, the ordinances or the code is broken down in chapters. The kinds of chapters you want to look at.
I think the whole thing needs to be looked at. And it's gonna take a while though, so.
Yeah, I mean, it, I don't know if there's any right way to do that. It's always kind of been, needs to be changed, changed at that time, but I'm trying to, you guys have somebody that keeps track of and maintains your code book, right? And, and do they go through and recodify everything on an annual basis?
Um, yes.
When do they do that?
Well, they keep the online code updated every, like, if, if something changes, I send it to them and they update it. But.
Do we have a problem or are we just looking for a fix for a problem we don't have? Is there a problem that we're having a problem with ordinances? Are we having a problem with codes or are we looking for a fix for something that isn't a problem?
I mean, I'll be honest, I don't really look at stuff as I need it. I can't say I've read through the whole, the whole code book.
I've tried.
So, I don't, if there's conflict, if there's things that seem outdated or weird, plus I've had to deal with it, I, I have a back book for it.
I mean, I, I agree that we need to make sure that things are as they should be, but I, I think our process has been, attack it when we, when we get to that, that moment.
There, there is a service offered by the league and they do it for like smaller communities. I mean, communities that don't necessarily have legal counsel usually. And what they do is they send in one of their staff attorneys to sit down with things to make sure that, you know, and for instance, is your code violating city, state law? You know, the due process requirements, the due process requirements may, and, and they reorganize, what we call recodified, they reorganize it and the code is passed all as one recodified code. I don't know if that's something that needs to be done. I, I, like, I, and candidly, I don't know, city your size, when, how often it should be done. Um, my, my partner did city law for forty-some years. I can ask him his opinion as to how often some of his clients went through that process, but, but, uh, I guess I've never found any kind of disorganization to it necessarily. I think there's, once we get the handbook fixed, I think we'll streamline some of those issues, but.
What's council thought on the issue?
I'm not interested in it. We don't have a problem. Bring me a problem, but I don't need to go sucky looking for a solution for something that doesn't need to be solved.
Well, I've started to go through the book. Um, it is incredibly boring. Whatever council wants to do in this, I just think that we, we should be looking at some of this stuff. And I, I understand where you're coming from, Jim. I mean, we've done this quite a long time. Whenever some problem comes up, we tackle it right then and there. I just don't think there's a problem with us being a little proactive on these type of things. Just my opinion on it, so. That's all I've got. I don't want to go anything else on it. That's fine.
I mean, I will, it'll take me all of two seconds. I will ask Gordon, you know, what, what he usually thinks as far as when something like that needs to be reviewed. And, and state law changes all the time and, and sometimes, you know, just like the, the, the offense code and the traffic code, that changes almost annually and that's why you re-adopt the new model traffic and model fence code. So, you can stay up to date on that. Your annexation laws change every other year, every third year. You know, some, stuff like that.
That's it. Okay. And moving on, new business, square. Jamie?
Are you guys ready for some good news?
I, I already know the good news. I cheated, but, okay, yes, please.
So, I went to the commission meeting last week to talk to them about the Jubilee and the request for the tent and all of that. And it got brought up, um, just different things and, um, they are offering for the city to buy the square for one dollar.
Is that on the budget?
Is that on the budget?
You know, I double-checked it like three or four times and I think we're gonna be good.
Well.
What are your thoughts?
We've maintained it for forty years. We might as well own it.
Are they gonna prepare the deed and make sure that it can even?
Yeah, make sure their council prepares the deed and brings it to us.
It's, it's not as if there's any kind of, you know, it wasn't gifted to the county with some kind of reversionary clause that sends it back to the estate of such and such.
Yeah, you know, I have to look into, because a lot of people don't even know that the county actually owns it. It's always the city's square.
Casino built next month.
But I just figured like the city has the events, so why not?
I'm all for this, maybe check it out.
Could we just make a motion to purchase it? If we did, uh, we're gonna have to do title, we're gonna have to do title insurance on it, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. There's probably an abstract that hasn't been, this has one entrance. Might be easier to get a stand-up opinion than to get to pay for title insurance. There's probably only one entrance on the abstract. So, get a stand-up opinion. John can do it for several hundred dollars.
You gotta say, are you talking metaphorically here?
Yeah, we're talking, that, that stand-up opinion's gonna cost more than a dollar, but get a stand-up opinion and, and be done with and don't mess with title insurance.
You guys want to accept a quick lane deed or do you want to do a warrant deed?
You're the attorney.
You probably don't need a warrant deed if the county's the one that's owned it.
So, what do we need to do?
Uh, well, it's just strange to me, but, I mean, I'll, I'll spend two minutes looking at title, make sure that they can. I feel like I'm doing the work for them by doing that. Um, but, um, and then prepare a deed and Jamie can present it to the county commission next time, I mean. If you guys want to accept it, I guess make a motion to accept it. Subject to it being reviewed by council.
Double-check the budget.
Double-check that out.
I'll pay the dollar myself.
I'll take the dollar on my paycheck.
I'd make a motion to buy the square for a dollar pending everything checks out.
Second, motion on the table to purchase the square from the county for a dollar pending everything checks out. Jamie, John's review. Motion on the table.
He seconded it.
You seconded it? Is it prime second?
What's the location for your affordable house?
Any other, don't even start any other discussion. All in favor? All opposed? Five oh.
Probably made enough off the pop. You've been selling other refrigerators.
Jubilee can buy, the Jubilee committee.
No.
This is also you can add your, your test.
Well, not me, but.
Well, is that, I mean, we have to pay taxes on that square now?
No.
They're getting more than a dollar then.
Let's move on.
Moving on, new business, junk vehicles. What's that about?
So, I just wanted to update you guys. I'm sure you've seen, we are strongly moving forward on, um, getting some stuff cleaned up. I talked with Adam a little bit before he left. Um, he had a letter drafted up. It basically says, you know, you're in violation of code. Um, you have thirty days, right? Am I? Basically, it's giving the person thirty days and I put out there for everyone that, you know, Scott is, um, available for, for a reduced price. And he, like, we're just using that kind of like we are our housing stuff, just, you know, letting people know that this is against code and we're trying to get some, some things cleaned up and here are some options, so.
Does he, does the letter say he's gonna, he's gonna file a complaint in municipal court or is he just?
I think he's taking the municipal court route. Like, if, if it's not done in thirty days, I believe they will be ticketed until it is moved. But he's giving the courtesy thirty days, right? Did you find what you were looking for earlier?
Yes.
So, I think it's kind of a courteous, like, hey, this is what we're doing. Move your car or Jubilee ticketed. And we'll take care of it in municipal court.
If they come to municipal court, what I'll usually do is, is, is ask for a fine and ask for like a suspended fine, half of that if it's gone within X amount of days or something.
Which Scott volunteering the, the services of whatever charge is kind of that out, that, hey, here it is, here's the opportunity, otherwise, this is the result. So, it's.
The fine equals the total expense and the expense to get rid of it might incentivize them.
What, what about the issue with the fence that I called you on earlier today? If it's in an enclosed fence?
It, it says building or, it says garage or other building in the code. I mean, i- i- if it's a, if it's a junk vehi- vehicle, it's a junk vehicle. I think the idea is that if, if a vehicle is not tagged, but it's in a garage, then maybe it's something other than junk. But.
I mean, how do you argue with somebody if it's junk or not?
One of the things you look at is whether it's tagged.
Right.
People don't tag it.
In this particular issue, I think, I think we're talking about a race car, which you can't tag.
No.
So, how does that fall? I mean, that's where we're running into an issue, is how does that vehicle fall under the ordinance?
The other thing about it, how can you let one person put up a fence to hide all the vehicles, but yet you're telling someone else that has a privacy fence that they can't hide a vehicle in it?
That vehicle was visible from the alley and from the street, so it fits the ordinance.
Right, but if the fence was completely enclosed, would you see it?
I don't see it. There's nothing I can do, but.
Right. Unless you specifically have a code enforcer walking up and down the streets checking people's backyards, which they can. Which can, code enforcer can go in the backyard.
Here's what rises to the presumption of a junk vehicle is absence of a registration, placement of the vehicles, parts or parts thereof on jacks, blocks. Um, absence of one or more of the parts necessary for the vehicle to operate. So, I mean, you know, let me see it. If it's a, if it's a, you know, if it's a, is it something they're building or is it?
It's kind of, it's just being stored there.
Okay, so it's, it probably.
I mean, it just needs to be really, whatever's in there needs to be very detailed because people will come in and argue.
I mean, when I think about a junk vehicle, I'm thinking something that's beat up and windows are broken out. It's a hazard. It's an eyesore.
It has no tires or rims on it.
Right, I mean, I think we need to be.
Weeds are ten feet tall.
I, I think we need to be more specific on our, because this is kind of just an umbrella to me.
If, if it's, if it's something that, that somebody has because they're conducting a business enterprise and complying with existing zoning regulations, which is what you were kind of referring to.
Well, no, this is a residential place.
Are you talking about fence? You're talking about fence?
Well, but, yeah, I mean, you're gonna have people saying, well, you let Scott Clausen put up a fence down there.
But I think that was, that was zoned.
It was zoned. But if they have a full privacy fence in their backyard,
Yeah, it's, it's just a discretionary issue. The officer thinks that it, it's junk vehicle and, and tries. I mean, I, I guess I can look at it and if I don't think so, then I just, I won't. I mean, I've got that into discretion, whether to prosecute the case or not. And then, and I, I talk about cases all the time and whether he thinks that something should be prosecuted. If I don't think so, I will know.
Well, they just asked me because they said, well, what if we finish building the fence and you can't see it?
That's the momma does.
As far as I'm concerned, I don't care.
Unless, unless there's a day where the code enforcer has to walk through your backyard and sees it, then I guess you address it then, but I wouldn't see why they would have any reason to go back there anyway, but it does state that I think they do have the authority to go through as the code enforcer, what I read, but.
Can't define junk, but I know it when I see it.
Right.
I think it's a free court decision, was it not?
It's called, yeah, one's called practicing law too.
Because this is a race car, they believe, they find.
One person is shot, another person is charged. Some of those junk cars, look on the internet, they're getting millions of dollars for.
Yeah, it's considered a family heirloom.
Right, so, I mean, whereas the vehicle the other day that was posted on our social media.
It's a gray area because it doesn't really.
That's a junk vehicle.
Say it, it doesn't say that you can't do it.
Right. So, I don't know if we need to, the person that we're deeming our code enforcers going around doing this, whether we need to communicate to them is use your best judgment and then they go, well, this is the ordinance, this is it. Regardless of what, what it looks like. I mean, what, what do we do?
Well, that kind of goes back to what Mark, I mean, if it's written down, that's what we need to be following.
I, I honestly think it's, it's, the ordinance is about as clear as it's gonna get. I mean, I, if, if it's, if it's a vehicle used for racing and they're just storing it because they're not racing right now, to me, that's not junk vehicle.
I mean, I don't mind.
A lot of times you see people that get in these demolition derbies. You know, those are junk vehicles, but they're working on them for purposes of,
Right.
They, they may be junk when they're done, but.
Well, I know the one person that had contacted me about the issue, I let them know to go back and, and discuss that with, with Chief since he's kind of leading the effort there and see what can be done. And if not, then potentially come to us and see what can be done. I don't know what you guys.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would rather, if it's going to municipal court, you guys don't, you don't want it before you, because then you'll have a municipal court
Right.
case in front of you. But, I mean, if, 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 my suggestion would be to Adam, if he's here, is to present that to me and whether he, whether my opinion is that it's a junk vehicle or not.
You guys think that's the way to go? Let, let it come to them?
I think that's the best way to approach it.
That's, that's where I'm at.
My, my law partner has a, a pretty beat up car that I've asked not to park in front of our office at times. And he actually left it for a weekend in front of his house and an officer that lives in his neighborhood ticketed that car. It was one of the greatest moments of my life. When he brought that to me the next day and I said, that's why we don't let you park in front of a building. And it was registered. It just has been fallen on a couple of times because he's got a tree that split.
Anything else on junk vehicles? Moving on to the drinking fountain in Brown Park. Jeff?
Um, I turned that over to David. David and Trent Sully uh, came up with a plan to repair that drinking fountain. They discussed it with Mary Ann. Mary Ann was satisfied with what they were gonna do. The cost would be about three thousand dollars.
We've already defined that's something that we have to replace, correct?
It was destroyed on that property.
Since it was a donated. Since it was donated and destroyed on our property.
I don't know where the money's going.
Money in the streets and the parks. I mean, it's going to have to come out of the park.
It's going to come out of there somewhere, yeah.
Do we have capital outlay?
Yeah, we do.
In the parks?
The treasure is right there.
I can tell you.
I didn't look at it today.
We've got the money to do it. I put aside some money for some trees that we're not going to plant. There's money there to fix it, so... At least on paper, anyway.
There's money there.
What does special parks get?
It's, it's stuff like that. I mean, stuff that doesn't ordinarily, ordinarily come out of the budget.
Ever figure out what it is?
Oh, I think everybody knows, but there never was any prosecution done.
There's 15,288.31 in the special parks.
Part of that was the tree money. And we're not, we found out later on that the trees that we've been told were dead, about half of them were, half of them weren't, so there's money there.
That's special parks. I... I don't know, is there, I don't know what the, because the parks is under the general fund, I believe, and there... And I don't have that breakdown. I know there's, at the end of January, there's a hundred... There's $670,000 there.
You just need like a liquor tax, or it's designed especially for parks?
We should have enough in the special parks to build it, because we don't spend anything out of it.
So, I mean, there's money there.
What's the, what's the dollar figure on it?
About 3,000. About 3,000.
Okay, because we need a motion to spend that.
It's basically a brick, like it was, right?
I think they've changed the design a little bit, but Mary Ann was satisfied with whatever. I haven't seen it, but David and Trent took care of it, so that's what she told me today. She's satisfied with what they were going to do, so I guess we don't have a choice.
Right.
But to fix it, so...
I need a dollar figure to be fixed.
Is it 3,000 even?
That's the way I understand it.
I would make a motion to spend 3,000 from out of the special parks account to fix the fountain.
Second.
A motion and a second on the table to fix the drinking fountain at Brown Park, an amount of $3,000 out of special parks. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Kerry's five oh. Okay. With no other new business, move into executive sessions. First on the list is the 10 minutes for Jeff to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel regarding a potential hire. And to reconvene, it's...
It'll take three minutes to screen out the board when I'm done. I'm scared 34.
At 8:43?
However, he's sitting at the table.
Why is Mr. Thompson out?
Not yet.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed?
I did.
Marshall made the motion.
You did? You opposed it?
No, I made the motion.
Oh. When I get done, I'm going to ask to be excused because I'm going to go and drink some coffee.
Jeff, I still think we still need you.
You do?
I still do.
Okay.
I'm not sure, but I think...
Well, if you do, I'll stick around. If not, I just...
We give Jeff the discretion...
Call meeting back to order?
I maybe we give Jeff the discretion to hire Dakota Hoy at the aforementioned front, the salary?
Motion and a second on the table to hire...
Dakota Hoy, is his name?
Dakota Hoy, at $18 an hour with a 90-day probation period. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It's four one.
Thank you. I apologize for the coughing, folks.
Where's our other member at?
In the bathroom.
Do you need something else out of me, do you think?
I think, I think we do.
If you wouldn't mind shuffling around, help me a little bit. I've got your hair.
He's like, do we still need Jeff here?
Yeah.
Which one is that? Jamie?
Well, the next one, but if he's the third one, we didn't put on there if we needed it.
Okay, so the seven minute, the seven minute?
So seven-minute executive session, uh...
To discuss personnel matters.
There is a novel at personnel.
Employee performance is what you have?
Related to superintendent.
Superintendent. Do I have a motion? Well, actually, I need, so, okay, seven minutes to reconvene, to include... Who do you want?
The council without Jeff.
Okay, so we're doing seven minutes without Jeff, and then seven minutes with Jeff.
Good boy. Okay, all right, to include city attorney, council. Do you need Jamie?
Yeah.
Need Jamie here? All in favor?
Yep.
All opposed? Okay, it's four one.
I'm a little confused here.
We'll be back at, what, 8:53? 8:53. Call meeting back to order. Okay, moving on to the next executive session on the list, 10 minutes to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel on employee performance. Which department?
What ones? Do either department or person?
Department.
Department.
What he's paid out of, for a real job, or...
What he's paid out of, it's fine.
The utility.
How the utilities.
Then include...
To include superintendent, city attorney, and clerk. And we will reconvene at 9:04. Oh, shit, I messed up. Motion, I need a motion.
Well, he made the motion.
You need a motion, second?
Second.
Brian seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Kerry's four one, Jim.
I can't get that here anymore, but we don't have the money to replace this one. Thanks, Jeff.
Yep.
Call meeting back to order at 9:04. No other business. I entertain a motion to...
So moved. So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor? All opposed? Kerry's four one.